There's going to be Z12-12, 84-88 West Grand Street. If there are any other applicants in the audience, uh, the application, your application will not be heard tonight. We'll move to the next meeting. So if there are any other applicants from the section of West Grand Street, please come forward. Seeing none, we're going to have some other applicants from West Grand Street to come through. We're going to take a minute so we can stop for a change of statement.
Sidney Levitt, L E O T T, will firm a limit and search Sillow. This evening, we are with Harold J. Polchott, B O L T O C K, Council of Frederick on this application. Chairman of the Board, Secretary of the Council. I appear here this evening for Community Access Unlimited by M.C. There are four properties that are part of this application. 84-86 West Grand Street, block 6, lot 1576, 88-90 West Grand Street, block 6, lot 1577, block 6, lot 1577, 90-94 West Grand Street, block 6, lot 1578, and 96-98 West Grand Street, block 6, lot 1579. All of these properties are in the bar four elevator parking zone. We're here this evening for both preliminary and final site plan approval. We're here before this board because of a D variance. Community Access Unlimited is a multi-faceted union service agency. It provides support services to people with special needs, including at-risk youth, people with disabilities, and people that need affordable housing. C A U with Community Access Unlimited is a 501(c)(3) charitable tax exempt organization. Its mission is to provide special needs people with access to enable them to integrate into the community, giving them the opportunity to live independently and also to become productive. It helps people with housing, life skills, vocational skills, employment, health maintenance, money management, socialization, education, crisis intervention, civic activities, and community support. All four of these lots are contiguous to one another. Today, they are developed. Proposal for falls for leaving the corner building alone, no change. Demolition of the second structure as we come down the block, and building its place on the same footprint. A new building, an office building. That is where the variance comes in, the variance. And also leaving an existing shed or a storage facility as they are presently being used in that fashion. Besides the D variances, there are some bulk variances for the proposed new construction. And in part, they are pre-existing because as I said a moment ago, it's the existing foundation. The zone would require 25.1, uh, 25 feet, 1 inch, or 25 feet, 3 inches based upon the senior swipe difference. And then the proposal is for 12 feet, 11 inches. The, uh, second deals with the number of parking spaces. And under the ordinance here, a grand total of 43 spaces would be required, and 33 are proposed. There's a 10 parking space deficiency. Um, all of the services we filed with your secretary. We have received the reports, all of whom have recommended the application. The fire department condition can be complied with. There is no food, so the order of comment, we believe, is not applicable, so it doesn't permit to play. And one of our processes will address the comment relating to garbage. Um, garbage, we will leave. I have four witnesses here this evening. The executive director, president, and architect, and engineer, and a professional planner. I'll be mindful of your 11 o'clock deadline, even though it's meeting very slowly. Are there any questions of background before we hold the session?
Commissioner, any questions, Mr.?
I would like to call first Mr. Sidney Blanchard. Sidney Blanchard, Executive Director of the Department of Public Affairs. Sidney, O S S A L, B L A M, C L H, N R D. Executive Director of West Grand Street, Elizabeth. Could you give the board the benefit of your relationship to your organization first? And then concise, what is it that the organization does?
I'm the Executive Director of Community Access and the founder of Community Access. Founded, Community Access is a 501(c)(3) non-for-profit social service organization that I founded out of my core, I can read the incentive line. Community Access helps people with disabilities become independent, taxpaying citizens living in the community. We do this by providing jobs, employment services, meaningful jobs, independent living training, housing, support in housing, money management, social recreational programming, and anything else that it takes to help somebody make it in the community. From our car back in 1979, Community Access has staff of over 765 people full-time. We support 3,000 people in the state of New Jersey, in the city of Elizabeth. We support approximately a little over 275 people. We have about 250 citizens of Elizabeth that work for us full-time.
Could you tell us what your proposal is for the property?
Yes. Starting the agency, I've been born here in Elizabeth, and Elizabeth being a natural place for headquarters to support people that mostly are low-income, who need transportation. And Elizabeth is certainly pushing public transportation. It's the fourth largest city in the state of Elizabeth, in the state of Jersey, and it's county C. So we established headquarters in, in Elizabeth. And back in 1990, acquired West Grand Street, which is the old Bell Telephone Building. When we acquired it, it was empty for several years. It was deteriorating. It was surrounded by old deteriorated factories and buildings that, down the street, that had some quite questionable characters living there. When I first lived in West Grand Street, we had to clean up and empty the city of Elizabeth. Prostitution, drug use that was rampant on that street. We acquired the factories.
Do you think we want to move the building? We appreciate this, Mr.?
As a continuation, Community Access is fulfilling the federal, state, county, and city of Elizabeth public policy in supporting people with disabilities. See laws and policy statements and consolidating claims, policy statements and consolidating claims that are submitted by the government of the clients. In order for Community Access to be supported to people with disabilities, we have to have staff or train. And you see, a train that's required for licensing in the state of Jersey and national accreditation. So our headquarters is administrative and for training. We have expanded our services. There's a huge waiting list for people with disabilities needing service. We hired staff of about 100 people a year who stayed full-time in this expansion. They need to have training and continuing education training, as well as training for the people we support. We have outgrown, uh, in West Grand Street. We were, been using, uh, 90 West Grand Street, which is about 6,000 square feet of a building for training. It's a very old building. It has no elevators, 1,000 square feet basement, has zero looking upgrade. And in doing so, placed in that building and building next door to upgrade with a modern elevator, training center, and new training center.
Will you have all the space for the staff people that are out in the community?
Yes, most of our staff are in the field. They have to have a location to come back periodically to write reports and to receive training. So we have about 30 spaces designed in the building for staff so they can have a place to call home to come in periodically.
Is there also a place of a lecture hall, assembly room, or something of that nature?
Yes, we do small and large training. Our training usually take place off-hours, sometimes on weekends. And we have training going on, you know, for employees and people we support.
How many employees do you believe will be present in the building at any one time?
I, I am projecting probably less than 35 individuals at any one time. We have a passage for about 30, 35 stations right now we're designing. But people are coming and going, so it's not a fixed group.
Is there any food proposed for the new building?
Uh, there's a kitchen that's in there just for swinging a staff tray and the quinoa face sandwiches and so forth. It's not a commercial restaurant, right, from that agenda?
Um, do you have plans for dealing with garbage and recycling?
Our plans are actually what we're going to be doing with the sites right now. We have garbage cans in the back and side of the buildings that we break them forward. As a matter of fact, we hired people with disabilities to do those services. We see the network, you know?
Um, I'm going to stop this witness at the moment. If there are further questions, you deserve the right to report, Mr. Blanchard. We would like to move on from the building's purposes.
My extension is a social service guy and a lot of the talk.
I'd like to go on next, Mr. James Correll.
James Correll, I fact, Jefferson Avenue, Elizabeth, New Jersey.
Correll, I believe you've testified.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Blanchard.
And are you the architect or representative of Mr. Peter Blanchard before this board this evening?
Yes, yes, I am.
I'd ask you two please is, I guess, to start with the concept of the structures that are there and will go into greater visibility here. But just a quick overview, what is it?
All right, basically, this is a corner property on West Grand Street and Cherry Street. There's, on the, as you face the property on West Grand Street on the left side, there's an existing brick structure, one-story building that runs from Grand to the various site. And then to the right of that, there's a frame structure. The proposal here is to demolish that frame structure, demolish the one-story baser building, and construct a new three-story building, which on G001 is in the hatch, you know, the, the, the shade area. That's the footprint of the new building. So the rear-end building of the rear-end property is an existing storage building. We call it building C, on its remain. There's another building B, which is another frame building on that remain. So that the, uh, what we're here tonight for is, is to show the proposed three-story building, which consists of basically office and, you know, teaching space.
Which would represent?
Like she referred to next. On sheet G100, this is the lower level of the building. It's a basic plan and the ground floor plan. Now the rights, I'm sorry, the left side of that first floor plan sits on top of the foundations of the previous building. And then we expanded the building to the right where that frame building was that had been demolished. So downstairs for this employee, it's a large assembly area for teaching and other purposes where they need to bring this large number of staff together. There's some local facilities, toy facilities. And then as you go upstairs in the building, to the second floor, those were those cubicle grades where the staff, there's 30 cubicles here. It's just going to test the floor. There's 30 cubicles on the floor. There's restroom facilities here, and there's a few offices. Basically, this is for the staff. We have a home base to come to, and then we are able to deal with the assignments, so they don't all be around time. The upper level of the building, as you call the third floor, is really for future expansion. We have it subdivided again, but basically it's a future office or teaching space as Community Access program were us. The last machine, which is G200, on the elevations of the building. We have a newer interest of the term, which is the same essentially center in Cherry here, but it's colored. And the only thing that's different, a little bit is up there, I'd like to point out, is that we were requested to approve a signature development. What we would like to do is have a sign on the main front entry, which is on the upper left corner, that, that's the right incorrect. That was the sign of the main front doors. And then as you drive in up Grand Street, then on either side of the building, towards the front, there'll be a very simple sign of basically Community Access Institute. So that as you will come in front, say, from the train station, before you can buy something, you'll realize that this is the building you're working for. Because several is driving in. If the sign was only in the front, they wouldn't see it to the water there. So as, as to aid people to find it, so look at the right-hand side of the sign. Where's the front of the building on each side?
Is there a picture there?
Yes. And the size of the sign, the height of the sign should comply with the Elizabeth consultant's citation.
Do you work with Mr. Galadano, City of New Jersey, or State Department?
Yes, I do.
Can you certify Mr. Galadano's argument?
Alright.
What do you think, Mr.? Any questions for us, Mr.? Mr. Thomas Quinn.
Sure, Mr. Jay Quinn. This is at District 28, Park Avenue, Scotts Point, New Jersey. Correct.
I believe Mr. Quinn has also testified before this board as an expert. Has also testified before this board in the field as an expert in engineering, but not a work of the call. Galish is. Okay, sure, isn't it?
Sure.
Do you have your background, patient, experience, and area of practice?
1993 graduate of NJIT. Who the hell?
No, I, I'm not.
1993 graduate of NJIT. I received my P D, uh, my PhD in 1997. I've worked for a variety of firms in New Jersey. I represented a minor workforce as the board engineer. I testified dozens of these ballots, including actually this quarter, for this board association with the different PAs.
Thank you for your information, thank you. Firstly, would the record describe the site, both dimensions, if they're overall or lot by lot? What's there presently, starting with existing before we move forward?
Okay. Um, as you've heard, existing conditions, the subject of the parcel contains four lots. Four lots total of about 35,000 square feet, for approximately 0.8 acres. These lots are located in the Orford Soho. They're all continuous lots located in the southeast corner of the intersection of West Grand and Church Street. The site is currently fully developed and contains four separate standard structures and 41 parking stall area, including driveway circulation. The site is also 88% covered by early surface, leasing condition. It has two driveway curb cuts from both West Grand and Church Street. And the only other really thing to note would be that the existing lighting in the parking area consists of building mounted lights. In the proposed condition, as you've heard, the two of the structures will remain, the westernmost dwelling most to the corner, and the basic garage, both programs will remain. The other two structures are to be demolished. In their place, the proposal is to construct a single footprint building, a three-story building, that will encompass entirely the two footprints of the structures that are demolished. That will encompass the small area in between those constructions. Footprint will increase about 1,000 square feet relative to the building structures that are out there. There will not be much of a change in the interior parking lot area as this building, as I said, fits in pretty nearly with the footprint of these structures. So there'll be some paving saw cuts where the building fits in. These existing paving will be matched to that building. The problem, the most dramatic change that we've noticed in the front lot, whereas you have the two buildings now at the front of the street and two separate walls and some retaining walls, and some paving in the front lawn area. In the proposed condition, there'll be a single access, one wall at a single building. So there'll be some pervy surface removed in the front, some additional green areas, and some landscape proposed along the West Grand Street front. The driveway configurations remain identical. Parking configuration, as the plan shows, remains identical. The proposed pervy coverage is almost identical at 88%. Those are removing some green areas, areas for replacements. These really don't affect, increase the pervy surface. We will also add two building mounted lights on the new structure, which will split two existing building mounted lights that are currently on one construction. So we're attempting to mimic in any way the existing lighting. This is something that can, it's already a custom. So it's still not changed. As you've heard, the variances, and here is the plan or measures that are quickly added, not for use, especially for front quarters. You've got also the building front door setback, whereas the railing was 25, 25 feet, 40 feet. There's a, we're proposing 12 feet, 11 inches in addition to current. There's a deficiency required. And I'd like to clarify, the existing count of the site is 41 stalls. You've heard testimony that we have 33 or 43 required. That 41 is applied amongst the variances. Eight stalls associated with residential use that applies. Then these 33 remaining stalls that serve as the office building, where 43 are required. So where 10 stalls issued from the offices, not the residences, not a residential site.
Mr. Beck, for me, I'm looking at your answers. Do you understand that this residential apartment only as opposed to being available in the other area? By, yeah, he's down.
Just because we're not located, parking would be on the side of Cherry Street. That they're there, that's not changing. Once they're behind the house, they're not changing either. They're just where they are. But all the parking, and I think we're going to park in a few moments, all of this is the wall of the building that generally used to change. You have a magnet here, which is a very mysterious.
Can I show the parking available in the immediate vicinity? Farthest access, whatever might be conceivable, has been easier. If that's the condition, the advocate would not have a problem with the condition. Is there really which you would have located with the house separated from the proposed, proposed bid? So it shouldn't be a problem, but if we're making the changes, is there? Um, okay, let's address also the comment that you had in the cabinet, parking proposal.
Yeah, actually, we did receive a letter from Harbor. I'm not going to go through all those items because we don't disagree in any of it. The ones that I'll clarify now are ones that... The ones that I'll clarify now are ones that may need some additional verification. One in particular, Mr. Galavano brings up the point that the existing handicap stalls are less than compliant with current media. We propose to relocate those from the drive aisle on the old lot that's on the far east side of the project. We'll bring those, two handicap stalls, which are sufficient for the parking lot size that we're endeavoring to provide, will bring those into the lot closest to the drop-off area that's located in the southern portion of the new building.
Respect to landscaping?
Yes.
Additional green areas, touch on that briefly?
Yes. We, as I mentioned, we have, the only green areas on the site now, one is the corner green area, the corner property, which is, remain unchanged. There's also the green area in the front of the two buildings now that will become one building. We have some landscapes, some trees, some planting shown here, and Mr. Galavano asked that, and also those up. We have no objections to working with him to testify that to the degree that he wants to.
Respect to the existing curb or sidewalk that might be disrepair, will the applicant take care of fixing those? Fixing, will the applicant agree to fix those?
They express.
Disrepair.
Yes, they express the objection, please.
Fire department has recommended a fire lane around the building. Can that, and will that be provided?
Yes, generally what happens is you strike the yellow area, no parking around the buildings, that's no problem, we can implement those daily margins in any manner that he sees good.
The engineering department has asked for compliance with the stormwater control and flood prevention damage. Will the applicant comply with those requirements?
We reply, I've heard from the fact that we're not increasing the pervy surface. So we're not, since we're not increasing pervy surface, we're not providing any sort of contention, because we're not increasing runoff. So we've not increased, so our position is that we will comply.
And as part, as part of preliminary and initial point of sight and approval, is it the applicant's intention that you will repair it based on that description, consolidating four separate pieces into one parcel?
That is correct, that's my understanding.
Additional questions, please, to Mr. Quinn.
Uh, any questions, Mr. Blanche?
Mr. James Watson.
Sure, James Watson, UATSN, EKA Associates, 328 Mark Avenue, Scotts Falls, New Jersey.
Watson, can you have a little bit of educational background, degrees, licenses?
Sure, I'll make it, I'm a licensed land surveyor in the state of New Jersey and the state of New York, I'm also a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. I've been here before, tens of almost hundreds of wards, I've been here six months ago.
What's that?
Yeah.
Room one.
Thank you very much.
Prior to your coming here this evening, could you tell us what you reviewed in the period of this?
Main site is, look at the comments, the wards, out of the plans, look at the master plan, the city will establish that as well as zoning orders.
So in summary, what use varies is soil, and your comments relating to that?
Sure, uh, the use varies tonight, so we're always using the residential zone. We believe that positives that we need to prove are basically inherent to beneficial use. As Mr. Blanch testified to before, he's a community-oriented, aggressive type, five-on-one CNA, so that's great, C3. I'm sure you all recognize that this is inherent beneficial use. The occupations or the jobs or the activities taken place in the building are accessory to inherent beneficial use. The courts have looked at this, and in two cases, they have stated that satellite parking made the Scholastic Bus Company versus the zoning board, the Scholastic Bus Company versus the zoning board, I think it was in Middletown, a satellite parking area for buses that is accessory to school use, kids share the inherent beneficial use. Another case, went to the medical center versus a principal township, where they recognized the fact that back office activities such as payroll, personnel, training, application process of the client was also recognized as inherent beneficial use. What you have to do, when you make this move, is you have to identify a use and delineate its function, I think Mr. Blanch did a good job of that. You have to demonstrate how it's integrated into inherent beneficial use. Again, I think you did a great job on that. You also have to establish why the location is necessary. That is down to proximity, it's there now, and it's the whole site, because the consolidation will be consolidated and integrated together, where you don't have to leave the site, travel to a facility, get a train, do the process, it'll be different. As you earn new to requirements, we also think that the master plan, when you look at it, you can, we'll look back in a second.
Parking.
Parking, that was going to get on next. We have two things we have to address, like the front setback issue and the parking issue. What we'd like to hand out while we're talking about the front setback issue is exhibit titled "West Rand Available Parking." I'll have Mr. Blanch come back up and explain this. This was prepared by his office for an application to the state of New Jersey, but they jumped a little bit around, we're going to talk about the front setback issue. That is generated by, if you look into where is the plans G101, that's generated by the entrance area that left out from the main building. The reason for that entrance area is the fact that we are reusing the existing foundation, thereby saving costs, saving, by reusing, recycling the building. It's just for entrance, it works, the building layout and the fact that the city of Elizabeth has a unique way of calculating average front setback, due to the fact that we only have four years of work, robberies that are used to do this calculation, one of them being across the street, county building is right up on the line, so that kind of changes things and pushes things around for us, so it's very hard to apply that, but it is no setback. We go over to the parking again, because of this exhibit, and I'll, again, I'll let Mr. Blanch flesh out how this was prepared, what it was done. You have total of four hundred and fifty-four parking spaces available in a very close proximity to the site. Based on that, that, very comfortable that you can grant a parking variance for a site for ten spaces. He'll explain the details of this, permanent parking, parking decks that are constructed now, there you also have decent spaces with the city of Elizabeth. Going through the C2 moves at the E, we have to talk about a couple of things. First of all, the site, I think it's properly, is in the situation because of the close proximity to the other C, community access holdings. We have to talk about positive criteria, and the special reasons are, first and foremost, that we're inherent beneficial use. In spite of that, I believe we have four other sections, I, K, and M, this will be law. So, it's a, I is proposed desire, visual requirements for creative development techniques. I believe that stairwells lead for access only for the available home, and it's the only place available in front, bump outs, as we are reusing the foundation, that goes to, again, safety access, which is to be, I believe, we can form, K, which is to encourage planned unit developments, which incorporate the best features of design when relating to type, design, and layout, potential commercial, industrial, recreational development in a different site, and I believe we comply because of close proximity of the other holdings, and the fact that we have public and private track, parking lots in close proximity, and the parking shortage, the damage, what we consider to four hundred and fifty-four spaces available. I believe we also comply on the M, which is to encourage coordination of public and private development, lessening cross-section development into a more efficient use of land, and again, when we're using the foundation, makes things cheaper to be here and safer to carry.
If briefly also touch on the signs that were mentioned?
Correct, the signs, as we're proposing on the sides of the building, towards the front and across the front side, mainly for safety, as you traverse West Rand, the west and the east, it allows you to spot and prepare to enter any of the parking lots that we use. Again, that goes to the safety, to secure the privacy. I believe that vehicle of safety is paramount, getting in and out of the site. This is a minor arterial road, is blessed by by master plan, it's heavily traveled, there are traffic lights around there, and there's a lot of turning motions, you have a cowering facility directly across the street, moving up, a couple of master. Okay, a couple of master plan goals, I believe we comply under your housing plan element number four, we'll continue to provide sound rental housing, a variety of income levels, we're continuing to rent to the, to our own corner property. I believe that we comply under your land use plan element, under the goals and objectives, and I believe we comply under number one, number five, and number six, number three of them. And that's it, just summing up. We have to look at the negatives, we have to deal with, there are no negatives, everything is in place now, just expanding, the community access facility, there's minimal traffic generated by this, and because of the bus routes, the train station, and all the parking that we talked about, there are no negatives. When you do the weigh, inherent beneficial use, it's impressive, reusing anything, labor, is, the labor force in Elizabeth, or my, 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 the uses now is expanding, like I said, and when you do the weigh test, I'm sure you can come to the conclusion that there is no substantial detriment of the master plan, zoning orders, the city of Elizabeth.
Thank you. No additional questions?
Mr. Blanche, any questions, please?
Thank you.
May I to recall, Mr. Blanch, if any question pending, and ask one question while I'm there? Question to my own, is does the present facility have, have an elevator?
Now, the, that's one of the problems, the present facilities do not have any elevators, and there are significant barriers for staff and people who support that, at this facility.
And the proposed building, the architect is designing with AKA standards, and the people that you service belong to that same.
Yeah, my question is, your hours and days of operation?
Yes, our, we're open at eight thirty, our normal operations, nine to five, and that's pretty much, I think weekends as the uses are called for.
Every day?
Monday to Friday.
No weekends?
Weekends, we use the facility as occasion to call for, training, practice.
As occasion to call for, for trainings and?
You're never exceeding thirty at night? You will never exceed any thirty at night? In any event?
No, not in the normal course of business, so. Not in the normal course of business. If there's a New Year's Eve party, I can't say that they're going to go on at eight thirty, that's very rare exception.
Are there any other questions, Mr. Blanche? Do you have any other ones?
But I don't know, you have got two minutes to nation, if you have one, should you call?
Are there any members of the public wishing to speak for or against this application? Please move forward.
My name is Broch Goldrader. Broch, B-R-O-S-H, my name's Goldrader, G-R-A-B-E-R. That's nine fifty, Edgewood Road, Elizabeth, New Jersey. I own a property on Cherry Street, the Catty Corners, this, it's a rental unit. I'm concerned with the change in usage from residential to commercial, obviously, community access is a noble organization, but I'm concerned about future uses. Should this, should they change what they're doing for any reason, that the building could become an office building for any, and then, once the building's changed, I mean, you know, then, we're, this is, this is, this isn't residential area, there's no other, you know, it's the border of Elmore. I purchased the property with the knowledge of it being a residential area, and now, you know, they're looking at change things. As far as the parking is concerned, there's, there's definite efficiency in parking, they have nets or whatever that, that really impact the quality of life of tenants.
I'm trying to think, does the tenant cooperate with the lease, they can't just go sell it when it comes to market loss, very different if they're seeking funds with the land. So if they were to ever sell it and turn it in, want to come in and order a lot of space, that person may have to come back before the score, and the same time fully, by a two-thirds majority of the score, for it to be changed in the other use.
They're still being constructed. They would be more likely to receive the parent, of being a, sorry, being constructed.
There are different standards for marginal versus non-procharity use, in terms of type of variance, grid, and thus type of work, reuse, free store, character definition. There are certain characteristics of society and the type of uses that are considered differently than the maintenance law, compared to the for-profit commercial enterprise. For-profit enterprise, but at much higher order of proof, if they would come here and say, we want to buy this building as opposed to use this for resident community, and is generally acceptable as a matter of law, as an inherent beneficial use.
But this could involve?
Not until, for, she was not without permission, it was.
They would be more likely to.
Each case, each case, for, for the score is on a different basis.
And we still have the issue of parking, and then, the current building is, is single, my concern with the, the current building is a single-story, and we're going to a three-story, this is going to have a completely different, and, once again, affect all the.
May I just require on this, what's your street address, or should you find your property on this map? This is the corner of the fourth family, where we're in relation. I'm pointing to lot number four on the zoning map, and asking. I'm pointing to lot number four on the zoning map, and asking, you're on Cherry Street, this is Cherry Street, you were back there?
You never do this, it, it was three, right now, it's not this, that's.
Okay, I, I want to clarify, so you are moving through this property, one, two, three, four, five, you're the sixth property away on Cherry Street, is that? This, this property from another lot?
Yeah, is that owned by the same, by community access? To me, it's almost one, one single property, I don't know what that is.
Sorry, speaking.
I, I was just looking at the map, and the property in question is connected to another property, which I think is also owned by community access, and so that is, is currently, is not just.
Just so we're clear, between your property and community access, is there not an apartment building that sits on one of the one thirty-three Cherry?
I'm the street guest, if I have a question.
Nothing else?
Do you have any more, Mr. Blanchard? Are there any others, or are there any arguments in the public motion to speak to this application? Steve Ng, from the organizing section, thank you, it's a pleasure, Mr. Cal.
Mr. Chairman, based on what I've heard here, I think I find more pros than cons on this application. Not every implication is perfect, maybe there are some flaws, there's, I mean, all I can say here is, if the neighbors tend to, if they work this application, applicant will work with the neighbors, if there is need to, and obviously, the partner consultants have all their suggestions, I'd be favorable to the application.
Commissioner DeFice, any comments? Thank you, Commissioner Dix.
I'm not very familiar with the brick, uh, community access, that's what I'm going to make of it.
Thank you, sir, Commissioner Fisher, can I?
No comments.
Commissioner P.
I'm going to choose.
Okay, um, I also think there are pros and there are cons. We live in a, I guess, a popular area, parking is always my commission. I'm satisfied, given the hours of operation, that it's on twenty-four seven operation, that you employees are coming down, there is empty parking on the street, by the wall, but that's good for you. So I'm also a favorite of this application. We also spoke, Mr. Gallois, and I think Harbor has a problem with the applicant meeting your requirements, I think the applicant has a problem speaking, Harvard's requirements, guys are going to work together to satisfy everybody's needs here. So, Commissioner, do I have a motion? Motion by Commissioner Dixon to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner P, now, Secretary Volker, Alves?
Got it.
I'm sorry, Alves.
It's a lot of talk, please.
It's almost witching now. Uh, Secretary Volker.
Commissioner DeFice.
Aye.
Commissioner P.
Aye.
Commissioner Tom.
Aye.
Commissioner Bellis.
Aye.
Commissioner Bev.
Aye.
By two, a count.
Five, I have two motions, four in total for adjournment, only one of which applies to work, there will be a special meeting in Zoneywood, Justin, I hope it's only third, all the commissioners are required to attend. Do I have a motion from chairman? Motion by Commissioner Dixon, do I have a second? Second by every other commissioner, so. Thank you.